To us, the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, I am nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for a moment of silence.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warpo.
Here. Clerk Golick, did Councilwoman Alexander respond?
Alexander.
Let the record show nine are present, one electronically in eight in chambers. Moving on to Mayor's address.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, thanks to the members of the council. It's good to see you again. Haven't talked to you for two weeks, well, I haven't reported to you for two weeks. So, this is an update. Over the last two weeks, we've submitted our city budget to you all. This is just sort of a one-page summary. Of course, you have more detailed copies in front of you. For the audience that's listening right now, in this budget, we plan to receive 94% of our total property tax collections net at the circuit breaker, which is about $39 million at 94% revenue. Total revenue built into this budget, the big categories, obviously, there's more detailed categories and smaller amounts. Property taxes of $39 million, pilot payments from sanitary, water, and Hammond Port Authority, $6 million, garbage fees collected, around $6 million built into that as well, gaming revenues, $11 million, MVH funds, $3 million, water revenue from Illinois sales, $9 million. This is all built into the budget. Another interesting fact is the city, in this budget, through the assessment process, increased its net assessed value by 6%, which is, I think, really good news. It's right around $2.5 billion. That's how much, if you wanted to purchase the city of Hammond, how much you'd have to pay right now. Total proposed budget for all levy funds is $86 million, which is our total budget. General fund is around $70 million of that, MVH, $7.5 million, parking racks, $6 point, with the bonds, it's about $8.5 million. So, blah, 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 blah. We reduced general fund expenses by $803,000. I thought that was good news. We built in extra pilot payments through the water department and through the Hammond sanitary district. I want to thank Marty Wilgus and Mark McGlaughlin for working with the city to help increase. And the pilot payments, it's not like we're gouging either. If the water company were a private business, it would get taxed at a certain amount, just like any other private business, and we're starting to tax them more like if they were a private company instead of a unit of government. And that's where we should be theoretically, but it's going to, you know, obviously, it takes a lot of work to get to that point, but we're getting closer and closer. Another thing, $140,000 in new revenue for ambulance fees. We did that, well, we're considering that ordinance right now. We're still doing the $1.1 million college bound expenses paid from TIF. That's through a partnership with Purdue Northwest. I want to thank Chancellor Keon for his help with that to save a million dollars of college bound expenses. And $4 million of police and fire insurance expenses are going to be paid using local income tax. This budget proposes a 2% salary increase for all city employees, except for police and fire, who agreed to take 0% this year, as well as next year. Excuse me, this is the second year, excuse me. 0% last year and this year, next year they would get 1%, the year after that, they would get 1%. That was because of an agreement we made with them through the pension adjustments. They agreed to take 0011, so we're experiencing that savings right now as well. Public safety in our budget. To give you an idea, we mentioned earlier, the property taxes are $39 million we're inspecting this year. The cost of the police department alone is $33 million. So, when you really think about it, our property taxes, it used to fund most of our budget, now barely funds the police department. But, you know, we deal with what we deal with. The fire department's $24 million in itself. And then, on the issue of gaming, a move we all made last year to spend the actual gaming money we have instead of anticipating how much money we're going to have, that saved us money and inflated the balances on our books, which is good for us when it comes to audits and things of that nature. So, that's my summary on the budget. Obviously, we're going to be discussing that during the next two meetings. Also before you, you have up for third and final reading, an ordinance on responsible bidding. This is ordinance 2133. It's response to the state, to Indiana's anti-union right-to-work laws that have been passed over the years. As you all know, on any project over $150,000, we're required by law to award capital projects to the lowest responsive, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. This ordinance establishes certain minimums in order for a bidder to be considered responsible. Only companies considered qualified under this ordinance and responsible under this ordinance will be considered responsible for purposes of bidding on capital projects. Requires contractors as well as their subcontractors, so they can't just shirk their responsibilities by hiring somebody else. This requires contractors and subcontractors to meet certain requirements when bidding on any capital project greater than $150,000. For instance, must be a business in good standing with the state of Indiana, obviously. All business names the company has gone by for the past 10 years. We see sometimes these companies that constantly change their name to stay ahead of the lawsuits. This would disclose that. Must disclose any violations of OSHA laws over the years. Must not engage in payroll fraud by misclassifying workers, like paying workers in cash, paying workers under the table to avoid paying payroll taxes, unemployment insurance, and things of that nature. Must have established apprenticeship training programs in place, drug testing protocols, proof of professional trade licenses required of the project's general manager, and things of that nature. This is an ordinance that municipalities across the state of Indiana have either passed already or are considering. This is something I think is important. I've talked to a number of union officials who are in the audience today, who are probably going to be testifying soon on this bill. You know, I consider Hammond a union town. I'm sure most of you guys consider it a union town, and I think that when we're doing big capital works projects, that companies should have certain requirements, meet certain threshold requirements in order to do business in our city, and this is an ordinance that'll help us get there. So, I hope you consider that. I know it's up for third and final today. And last but not least, the appropriation for the American Rescue Plan. We did our resolution at the last meeting, and I appreciate you, the Hammond members of the council, for unanimously approving 75% of the money. 38 of the $50 million, or 51 million, excuse me, so we have around $13 million left. These projects were shovel-ready, citywide, and I know I've heard some remarks about maybe too much of them are in the first district. We really just focused on shovel-ready projects that were ready to go right now, and it just, in this case, a few of them happen to be in the first district, I acknowledge that, but these are like the Robertsdale lead remediation. If we didn't do something like this, we would have to declare a super fund in that part of our city. I think this is a great use. It happens to be in the first district, and there's a couple other projects in there, but I think this is a great use of our money. I really do. And I think if I lived in that neighborhood, I would want my city to do what we're doing, which is taking care of the problem without relying on the federal government. Firehouse number two also in that part of the city, new housing at the Clark High School Fields is also in there. In the second district, we have the downtown home and reconstruction, which is the Jeff Speck Plan we've been working on for years, a $5 million project, like just a Mirer project in Hessville, another $5 million project. Jeff Speck inspired would be the right way to put it. We basically learned what he was talking about on Homan, and we applied it to Hessville, another $5 million. The Little Kyma, excuse me, the YMCA adjacent to the Sportsplex, $45 million project, it's in the third district. We need to come up with $10 million locally. We wanted to do five out of ARP, and we were going to come up with the other five through probably TIF or something of that nature, but that's a $45 million project in the third district. Oxbow Road, J.F. Mahoney Drive, two streets that are in bad shape and badly need repair. Our problem is, nobody lives on those streets, so it's hard for a district councilperson to get excited about spending a million dollars on a road that services no homes. We've had this problem for too long. This takes care of it. Hessville Bridge, I mean, I've been mayor 18 years, and the most consistent and common complaint I get is about trains in Hessville. I mean, we get complaints all across the city, but the most consistent, persistent complaint I get is about trains in Hessville. And I know if I was to, you know, the councilman would probably echo that sentiment. This plane gets us over that bridge. This'll be a bridge over that perennially stopped train in Hessville. I know it's a lot of money, but this is a solution to a problem. We're not going to fix the trains. You know, we could keep complaining about the trains, or we could do something about it. I want to thank Governor Holcomb in the state of Indiana for partnering with us on this project. This is our portion of the project. I think it's important. I know there was technology upgrades, water tank repairs, and things of that nature, but we did the resolution last week. I appreciate the council. I want to emphasize to the council, we have a couple other projects. I know there was some concern expressed that maybe the fourth district was not getting enough love. I love the fourth district. Councilman Emerson, I could tell you that we want to build a new firehouse, and I'm on the record right now, we want to build a firehouse in the fourth district. Right now, we have Station 7, which is an old station, we have the station on Homan, that fours, five, Station 5, which is damaged, and probably, it's not going to be repaired in that location, so we're dreaming. What could we do with the new house? Where could it be? We have a couple sites, and I talked about them with Councilman Emerson. That will be in the next phase. You have my word on it, okay? It's badly needed, and it'll save us, but I don't want anybody to think that this administration doesn't love any one part of our city. That's completely not true. These projects were in the hopper for years, and they were just ready to go, and ARP was a godsend. Again, we only had two federal members of Congress that voted for it. Congressman Frank Murvan voted for it, Congressman Andre Carson voted for it. We sent 11 representatives to Washington, and only two voted for it. Let's remember that when we're cutting the ribbon on these projects. Other than that, I don't know if the council has any question, but that's my report for the week. And I want to thank the council again for working with us on the budget. I know over the weekend, we had budget meetings, and from what Megan tells me, they went very well, and I appreciate the council for asking lots of questions and hopefully clearing up a lot of issues. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving then, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Most accepted minutes from September 13, 2021. Please place that file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
A move we pay claims, beginning claim dated 9/17/21, and any of the claims dated 9/22/2021. Claim number 4563 through claim number 4844, in the amount of $4,694,885.09.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. Clerk Golick, you want to read them all at one time?
Yes. Item A, ordinance 21-30 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate from the ARPA coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act. Item B, ordinance 21-34 sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a 14-foot alley in the 5100 block east of Homan Avenue, lying between Homan Avenue and the bus lane at the Dan Raven Plaza in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana. Item C, city of Hammond proposed budget, 2126 sponsored by Mayor McDermott. Item D, ordinance 2137, the 2020 budget proposal for the Hammond redevelopment sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vines. Item E, ordinance number 2138, the 2022 budget for the sanitary district sewer maintenance fund and special sanitary debt service fund sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spitali.
Does anyone wish to speak under public hearing on any of these issues? Does anybody wish to speak on these issues? Does anyone wish to speak on these issues? Hearing none. Public hearings are now closed. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Yes, I've had some communications back and forth about some questions in my district. I want to thank code enforcement for the immediate response on the old Bargain Finder building in Hessville Park. The next morning, they found out the new owners had already taken out permits to fix the building. That was after the crime watch meeting. We got immediate response, and there is somebody fixing the building as we speak. Also, I want to special thanks to Sergeant Holbrook and the Traffic Bureau from the Hammond Police and the prompt action taken on Kennedy Avenue. They not only stopped trucks, ticketed trucks, but they went to the businesses that were mostly involved and let them know what was going on. Side note on that, last Thursday or Friday, I was on Kennedy Avenue, and I saw a dump truck, seemed like it was going kind of fast down Kennedy Avenue, and I was right at 164th, and I saw, and then it slowed down at 165th and then turned right. And I noted, I go, because somebody had brought it up also at the crime watch meeting, that our Hessville project is going to 164th, and I thought, well, that'll help alleviate that situation, it'll slow it down about a block or two sooner, so. I know the police department can't be there all the time, but I appreciate their quick response on that. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Outstanding. Does anybody else have anything under communications? Does anybody else have anything under communications? Does anybody else have anything under communications? Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to report on the capital improvements board. We did not meet on September 20th because there was no pending business, so I have no report for the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Wednesday, October 6th, Edison Community Watch will meet 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Hessville Crime Watch will meet October 21st at 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, October 1st at Irving School at 9:15 a.m. The South Homan Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, October 14th at Trinity Lutheran Church at 6:30 p.m. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October 14th also, 6:30 p.m. at Calhuma College. As you just heard, Councilman Rakos talk about some of the issues that were brought up at the crime watch meetings, that is an excellent venue to get your concerns addressed and complaints heard, so please attend a community or crime watch meeting in your neighborhood. It doesn't even have to be in your neighborhood. Just come out, hear some of the safety tips that everyone is giving. This month coming up, October, is fire prevention month, so at Irving and Edison, there will be firefighters there to address fire safety, and the information is always very beneficial. And as usual, if you see anything suspicious, please call the police, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'll be bringing out from Council of Zoho, 2132 and 2134.
Is anybody going to bring out 2130?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I'll be bringing out 2130 from Council of Zoho.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I'll bring out 2131.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Is that all of them reported out? 2133 needs to be brought out? You got 2133? Okay. That covers it, right? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Hearing none. Committee reports are now closed. Clerk Golick, I'm sorry. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance 21-30 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate from the ARPA coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2130.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, this ordinance outlines the appropriation of the American Rescue Plan funds that we have received thus far.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes, I thought I heard a yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the ordinance passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 21-31 sponsored by Councilwoman Rakos, and we're in submitting ordinance numbers 7598, 8348, 8753, 9161, and 9357, also known as section 93.005 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to ambulance user fees to increase loaded mileage rate.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move for final passage and adoption of 21-31.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
This is just an increase in the mileage due to the fact that there is an increase of fuel and equipment in any kind of transportation, and also, any Hammond resident that is unable, that isn't covered by insurance, that is unable to pay, they're never charged, or never, they do not turn over to collections, any Hammond resident. So, that won't affect the Hammond resident itself. It's mostly covered by insurance.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
So, no Hammond resident gets a bill, no Hammond resident will feel this increase, this will be felt by insurance, is that the way I understand it?
Mayor.
Mr. President, that's true, Councilman.
That's true?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
This is something that's paid for 98% of the time by insurance, through person's medical insurance or auto insurance, or something along that nature. Sometimes, when it falls to a Hammond resident to pay this fee, we've never, since we've implemented the ambulance fee, we just don't proceed if it's not.
If a resident gets a fee, because you know that sometimes happens, should they proceed?
It's just not acted on by us. We choose not to move forward with that at all, Councilman. We've never done that since we've implemented the ambulance fee. It's just, if it doesn't come in through insurance, we just don't follow through with it. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Yes, for clarity, if I heard correctly, so, Mr. Mayor, if the resident does receive a bill, and I think that's not even what Councilman Kalwinski was saying, what should they do in essence if they did actually receive that bill?
Mr. President.
I'm mayor.
I don't believe they do get the bill. We usually know if it's insurance paying it or not. If they do, it's never acted upon, which I don't even think we bill, but. There a fire department here? Hey, could I have the fire chief come up?
Sure.
Thanks. Hi, fire chief.
So, the company that does it, AccuMed, they will send a bill to the insurance company. Whatever the insurance company pays, we accept. If the homeowner does get it, it's because a lot of times, we don't get the insurance information, because we weren't able to get it at the time. We can't get it from the hospital. If they submit it to their insurance company, they pay it. If they don't have insurance, just throw it away. We're not coming after you. We're not going to send anybody to collections, anything like that.
Does anybody have any further questions for Chief Smith?
Thank you.
Does anybody have any further discussion on this? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 21-32 sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 584 Sibley Street, Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move for adoption and final passage of 2132.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance is to reclassify from S1 open space and recreational facility district to an R1 and two-family residential district of 584 Sibley.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 21-33 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 7396 and amending ordinance 8370, also known as chapter 103 of Title IX of the Hammond Municipal Code, and adopt and enact chapter 107 of Title IX of the Hammond Municipal Code relating to responsible bidding practices and submission requirements on public works projects.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 21-33.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of 2133 by Councilman by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mister President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Just a question, and, uh, does, does the ordinance protect, or had it in the past protected, from a contractor subbing to somebody that, uh, isn't licensed bonded and insured with the city or, or passed the building test in the city? Is, because in the past, I think sometimes what happens is somebody uses the, the bidder's paperwork, and they may not be fully qualified. Can you speak to that?
Thank you, Mister President.
Mayor.
I read, reading, I perused the ordinance one time again before I walked in today. It's a four-pager. I know that subcontractors are held responsible as though they were the contractors. They must meet all the same requirements, subcontractors that are the people bidding on the projects. As far as licensing, that's a good question. I'm not sure if Kelly or Bob is here? Look at that, Dean's here. He seems eager to answer this question too, so...
I promised to, to come in because, Kevin asked. Um, all subcontractors are required to be licensed in the city of Hammond.
So, when there's a, if I may, when there is a sub, then they provide all the necessary paperwork, like the original contractor who did the bidding, or their company?
Yes, up until this point, this ordinance clarifies additional requirements by both the prime contractor and the subcontractor. But up to this point, all subcontractors are required to be licensed and bonded with the city.
Thank you.
One of the concerns we had with this ordinance, I know it's shared by Dean, who's gonna be implementing this ordinance, is the amount of paperwork that, I mean, the record-keeping that's gonna go into this is fairly massive. If there's twenty companies that bid on a project, and they have twenty subcontractors, they all have to file massive amounts of documentation with us. So, it's gonna create some paperwork for sure. But I think the spirit of the ordinance is to protect the unions further from out-of-state companies that are trying to be declared lowest responsible and responsive bidders, forcing us to accept them. And, you know, it could be a company with a bad track record on safety violations. Could be a company that doesn't drug-test their employees. Could be a company that's paying their workers hourly. This further protects us from these types of companies. And I know there's a number of union officials that are here that might wanna testify on this. Did they already miss the period to do that, Mister President?
Well, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and let them speak.
So, move.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Kalwinski. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, the motion carries to suspend the rules, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there any, would any of you like to come up and speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister President, Mayor. My name is Carlton Glover. I'm a representative for the Operating Engineers Local 150. Uh, we represent twenty-three thousand members in a tri-state area, four thousand of which here are in northwest Indiana. Thank you for consideration of the Responsible Bidders Ordinance. I think it'll be beneficial for the city. Forty-four other communities also have found it beneficial. It establishes a fair and objective criteria for ensuring quality and qualified bidders participate in the bid process. Also, it also, we had some problems with the previous, uh, Responsible Bidders Ordinance, where the apprenticeship program, you must participate in apprenticeship program. This new updated Responsible bidder ordinance, uh, mandates that you actually graduate apprentices. So, it's, it's good for the unions, it's good for the community, and it helps you ensure that you're getting the best bang for your buck here in the city of Hammond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister President. My name's Jeff Phillips. I work for the Foundation for Fair Contracting. We're responsible for drafting responsible bidding ordinances throughout the state of Indiana. Uh, I wanted to thank the mayor's office and yourself for the attention to detail and the professionalism when drafting this ordinance. I've read it, it was very well-written. Thank you so much. I also wanna clarify that our job is mainly to improve the quality of work in the construction industry, and that's what we're trying to do with the Responsible bidder ordinance. So, thank you for your time. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Tony, you coming up?
Hi, I'm Phil Hernandez. I'm IVW six-ninety-seven, a twenty-year resident of the city of Hammond. The best thing about this ordinance, it helps to keep local people employed. Keeps the out-of-town contractors from bringing the out-of-town workers here just to do the job and then take their money home. This employs a lot of local residents. Thank you.
State your name.
Thank you, Mister President. Tony Hopperidge, Teamsters one-forty-two Business Agent. I just wanna thank Mayor McDermott and his administration and Councilman, uh, Dan Spitali for sponsoring this ordinance and all the council for your support. It means a lot to the building trades, and I'm just here to thank you guys tonight. It's a very important ordinance. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this? I will entertain a motion to go back to regular order of business.
So, move.
Second.
Motion's been made by, to go back to regular order of business by Councilman Kalwinski, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, regular order of business. Clerk Golick. Please continue. Twenty-one thirty-three.
Twenty-one thirty-three, there was a...
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any further discussion on this? Is there any further discussion on this? It wasn't introduced, right? Is there any further discussion on this? Clerk Golick, roll call on the ordinance.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, the ordinance passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-four sponsored by Councilman Torres, an ordinance vacating a fourteen-foot alley in the fifty-one-hundred block east of Holman Avenue, lying between Holman Avenue and the bus lane at the Dan Raben Plaza in the city of Hammond Lake County, Indiana.
Mister President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I move for adoption and final passage of ordinance twenty-one thirty-four.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Council, um, Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mister President.
Councilman Torres.
This is an ordinance to vacate a fourteen-foot alley, the fifty-one-hundred block of east of Holman, as, as needed to accommodate some new construction going on in that area. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to...
Item A.
Introduction of ordinances, I'm sorry. I got lost. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Introduction of ordinances, item A. Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-six. The Hammond City Budget sponsored by Mayor McDermott.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on October twelfth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Raycos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B. Ordinance number twenty-one thirty-seven. The two thousand twenty-two budget proposal for the Hammond Re-Development sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vanez.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-one thirty-seven. Refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on October twelfth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C. Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-eight. The two thousand twenty-two budget proposal for the Sanitary District sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez and Councilman Spitali.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of twenty-one thirty-eight. Refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on October twelfth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made, as mentioned, and seconded by Councilwoman Vanez, and seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item D. Ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine sponsored by Mayor McDermott, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the city of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance, heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-one thirty-nine. Refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on October twelfth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Raycos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item E. Ordinance twenty-one forty sponsored by Mayor McDermott, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for all policemen and firemen in the city of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance, heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-one forty. Refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on October twelfth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made, as mentioned, by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Raycos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item F. Ordinance twenty-one forty-one sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, an ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-four-nine seventy-four seventy-two, eighty-six twenty, eighty-six thirty-eight, eighty-six sixty-nine, ninety-one eighty-one, ninety-two forty-two, and ninety-four twenty-nine, also known as section thirty-seven point zero-two-zero of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to an employee reporting policy.
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-one forty-one. Refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on October twelfth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made, as stated, by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mister President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
This ordinance will require any employee who engages in off-duty conduct that leads to their arrest related to their job duties, uh, that their, um, offense must be reported within seventy-two hours. Uh, this is a policy that is going to be amended in the Personnel Policy Manual.
Mayor.
Mister President, I, I wanna, in addition to what the Councilwoman is talking about, uh, this policy is also being proposed in front of the Hammond Sanitary District, the Hammond Water Department, Hammond Housing Authority, as well as the Hammond Port Authority, in mere identical ordinance. Uh, it stemmed from an off-duty incident with an employee in another county where they received an OWI, and they didn't tell us. And then that same employee also received another OWI, and the only reason they told us about the second one was because they were in jail, and they couldn't come to work. And I thought to myself, don't you have some type of affirmative duty to tell your boss if you get a criminal charge? And there's none in our book. The only one that had it was the Hammond Police Department. This is a mirror of what the Hammond Police Department does. Obviously, if an officer is charged with a crime, we need to know about it. But I dare say, if an employee is charged with a crime, we need to know about it. That's not saying that we're going to do something about it. Maybe you get a reckless driving and it's a misdemeanor crime. You got to tell us about it. OWIs, of course, any other crime, of course. To me, it's a no-brainer that employees should have to report this. Whether we act on it, that's another matter, but I think they definitely have an affirmative duty to report that to us. But I didn't want you to think that the Hammond Council was debating this alone. It's being debated in water, port, sanitary, and housing as well, so.
Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of the ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on, item number 11, resolutions, there are none. Item number 12. New and unfinished business, the intent to consider went away when we passed 2132. Councilman Torres.
We're on 2135? Oh.
2136.
Yeah, 26. Yeah, I'm going to make a, I'm going to move to deny ordinance 2126. It was never brought out of the council, but it is replaced by 2132, which we voted on earlier in the meeting. So I make a motion to deny 2126.
Second.
Motion's been made. Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Attorney Berger, do we have to bring this out and vote it down? Or can we just make a motion to deny this because it's a?
Making his motion, his action on it, that's required so that it doesn't automatically become effective.
So we're making a motion to deny 2126? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick roll call on the motion to deny 2126.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I move to have a letter sent to the Board of Public Works and Safety to request a traffic study at the east end of 100th Block of Doty to see if change is warranted as per ordinance 2135.
Are you making a motion that the council as a whole sends a letter? Or do you just want to send the letter?
I just want to send the letter to the Board of Works and Safety to to have that study done.
So Clerk Golick, we can just have it noted in the notes that Councilman Torres is sending a letter to the proper, what he said? Board of Works, I'm sorry, Board of Works. It'll be mentioned in the notes.
I was hoping the whole council would send the letter, not just me.
Motion's been made that the council as a whole sends a letter to the Board of Public Works. Seconded by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Koinski. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
No.
Warple.
No. Motion carries seven in favor, two opposed. Is there anybody else that has anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I have our updated COVID numbers for the week, December 12th. For 46320, we have an additional 52 cases. For 46327, additional 43 cases. For 46323, 91 cases. For 46324, 93 cases. For 46394, 30 cases. That takes us to 309 cases for our last week to this week. And our updated vaccine numbers are as follows. For 46320, we have 119 new vaccinated, which is 45.6%. And 46320, 46327, 105 new fully vaccinated residents, which is 44.2%. For 46323, 253 new fully vaccinated residents, which is 47.5%. For 46324, 219 new fully vaccinated residents, 48.2%.